Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the U C report zoning board for our agenda meeting. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. It being seventy-eight, I'm going to commence the business of our TV this evening. I'm going to start by just going to the ten houses matter at the beginning of the fourth of our three. I'm going to introduce myself, my name is Ralph Shannon Penny. A pleasure of serving as the chairman of our report zoning board. I'm going to take a moment and introduce members of the board and others that are here this evening that are sitting up at your table. What I like to do and what I typically like to do within two moments and just go through the flow of the evening for anyone who is here in the room this evening and good evening everyone to go there, follow along online, which places myself and all of us in a little bit of a challenging social, social exercise of trying to address and be attentive to those that are over here physically as well as those that are following along in a hybrid fashion. So you'll see behind me that we have a screen that represents one, anyone who's logging on remotely. I will be able to see just to give you a lay of the land and branch boost board that is the business of this evening. Anyone who is here remotely will be able to see everything that we see, hear everything that we hear. For all of the members of my colleagues on board, if you can, I will introduce momentarily. I'll ask if you can kindly take a mic in hand so that anyone listening remotely as well as anyone sitting at the back of this room has ease of hearing. And so that it can be reported. Anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment section, and I'll go through a quick flow of the sequence of our procedural board. That is to say, our board's organized every evening and every meeting. It's basically an orderly sequence of sections, and I'll describe what those are. There's one called public comment. When you, when you come up here, if you choose to help and speak, please take the podium or here physically in our, in the senior center. Just that mic down and they couldn't give your name and address for the record so that you can record you. And anyone who is logged on remotely will ask you to kindly raise your hand virtually by clicking on the hand raise icon at the bottom of the screen screen. We will, I will recognize you by name or by telephone number in the call. At which point we will undo your mic, we'll ask you to do the same and you will have a court. So just without further ado, I'm going to take a moment and introduce the board. But before I do, I'll introduce those sitting to my right, to my far right, Kathleen Sullivan, sorry, Caitlin Sullivan, who is our city planner. To my immediate right, Andy Ford, who is our, our planning director. To my left, we have Ken Swanton, Ken is our vice chair. To his left, we have Gregory Bennett, member. To his left, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary. To his left, Miss Patricia Pennick, Miss Patricia Pennick is our, among our two newest members. And is a member of the Z B A along with, along with Lynn Scow. Both Lynn Scow and Patricia are, sorry, Pecan, pardon me. Pecan are associate members. I always designate for purposes of legal record who are five voting members are this evening. The five voting members will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Delisle, and Miss. Patricia, did you know the last time or was it? Okay, I'll designate then for purposes of this evening. Patricia, you'll be our fifth voting member unless there's a conflict. And of course, any member who's not designated as a voting member is still a fully participating member, deliberating member, questioning member, and in every other respect. Active member of the Z B A. So having designated our, our five voting members, introducing the board, I'm going to take the role, establish that we have a legal model. And then we'll begin based on the agenda for all of those that are following along remotely. I'll ask if you just go to the city reports website and will see under the zoning board feels our agenda is published. And we will follow that sequence to take all of that business in order to close and we're here this evening, the same with the plots. So calling the role of the reports on board feels for the hearing dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Kindly members of C B A respond with either here or present, Mr. Stephen Delisle. Here, Mr. Ken Swan. Here, Mr. Walter Chan. I believe Mr. Chan is absent, Mr. Gregory Bennett, present. Miss Lynn Scow.
Present.
And Mr. Patricia Penn.
Present.
Great, we have one, two, three, four, five, six members of the Z B A present, that is a quorum. Just for those that may not be familiar with the zoning board now it flows. I'll go through a quick lay of the land and our process and then we'll get right into the business. What we will do is we will start, having called the role, we will start with the first matter, which is number two on our meeting agenda. And it's a request for a minor modification. Whenever an applicant for zoning relief has come before us at some point in the past, will receive the permit. And then has since thereafter needed to change some parameter of the permit, whether it is minor or mild or major or technical and otherwise, they must come back before us and request that relief, relieve the change. Minor modification is in determination by our, by the planning office that the request is not significant. And so we may take it up as simply, you know, in an understanding of what's being requested and where they ask questions. And before we will grant, if it's successful, the relief for that applicant to go and make those changes. We will deal with that minor modification that's on our agenda twenty-one twenty-two. We want us to be first. When we get to the public hearings which follow, we have a few continuances, I'll deal with those first in case anyone's here for an application that won't be heard this evening. You don't have to stick around and find that out. We'll deal with those first, then we'll deal with the subsequent matters that are going to go forward. The way the phone evening will work and is this is the specific case for every meeting. We start by reading the legal notice into the record, that's the legal notice that was published, it's what was mailed to you during the month. It's what we would have branded the daily news if we were just observing. The legal notice is it's the published notice of what the applicant, who the applicant is, what the addresses and what they're seeking for relief. And I will read that and just describe it in sort of layman's terms, just regular language that describes that what they're asking us to grant that we need a special permit. Special permit for non-complorant variance. And then you go further, I'll describe what they're specifically looking to advance or to increase the footprint of a some more to, you know, create an addition or whatever it is. So that it's easy to understand even if you don't have the agenda plans. After I read the public notice, I'm inviting applicant or the applicant representatives to take the podium, to present the application. If you are presenting on behalf of yourself, just see your name and address. If you are representing an applicant, just if you are, your name and whether an engineer, you know, architect, law firm, and you know, just interested party designer, whoever. Once the presentation portion is concluded, I will then close that portion of the public hearing and then go to the public comment section. At that point, Mr. Ford, our, our city, our planning director will put up a slide. The slide will represent the rules of the road for public comment. I always ask that members of the, of the audience, members of the public kindly govern yourselves respectfully and accordingly with a reason. You know, with respect to the time you take, we asked them to govern it to two minutes or so, so that everyone has a moment to share their thoughts. You needn't come down in a vertical of pro, con, for, or against. There is no sort of segregated section of you are either for a project, we'll hear from you and then you're against the project, we'll review. Just simply raise your hand, we'll recognize both the audience first and those on line second by name and just simply speak your mind and we'll hear from you. And if you're going way long, I'll let you respect at last, even kind of wrap it up. We rarely have to go beyond that, so just kind of govern yourselves accordingly, so that everyone has a moment to speak. After we go through public comment and everyone is heard though, we will then close that portion of the hearing, we'll go to questions from the board. I will then ask any member of the Z B A who wishes to maybe leave off questions. It doesn't go in any particular order, though it can, just for sort of, you know, organizational sake. In the absence of someone who just simply wishes to speak first, and I'll give that member the opportunity to do that. I'll simply go from left to right through every member of the Z B A who's here this evening. After we do that, we will beg questions from the board. The board members may ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's architect, members representing the other member. We will close that portion of the public hearing and then go to deliberations. Liberations is when you get here in the Z B A to sort of think out loud and consider the legal criteria that must be met, whether the applicant is vetted. There may be additional questions, in which case we ask. That's really the lay of the land. So at the conclusion of that, I will close that portion, the final portion of the public hearings. And I will then ask a member of the Z B A to, to make a motion. You will hear a motion made in the affirmative, I just want to prepare anyone who hasn't been here before that motion under law review, the board has only made in the affirmative. So remember, whether or not to support the application or intend to vote favorably or not, will make a motion to approve. That's simply just the format. That motion will be made and seconded, once it's made and seconded, I'll call and vote. Every member will vote day or day and in order for an application to prevail, it must have four yes points, in which case the motion carries. The application is approved. That's essentially it. I apologize for the, it's a necessary long-winded destruction, but I know there are some folks that haven't been here before. So I tried to make that part of the hearing clear. So without, without anything further, I'm going to go right into the first matter on our agenda this evening, which is the request for minor modification. This is the application of twenty-one dash twenty-three Walden Street. It is a twenty-twenty application. And is there someone here to speak on the app? Matt, thank you. I just come and vote in and you'll bring in your name and address and present your object.
My name is Nora Dodd, home on nine three Walden Street. So our permit said we had indicated a trellis in the location where a sidewalk used to be. And we're requesting a forego, forego putting that trellis there because our landscapers informed us that it'd be difficult to grow and the canopies on the trellis, this along the perimeter of the house elevation, there's about an eighteen inch concrete slab that would prevent things along the trellis. So we decided in the field to plant a tree. You can see on the slide, a tree, and that's a newly planted tree. It will, it will grow, but they're, so that's safe even better. We just thought that it would look strange to put a trellis behind the tree on, on the elevation, the side of the house without any canopy sign. So we're just requesting that we remove that trellis on the elevation. Next slide, okay, so there's the elevation. I'm going to go back to. Okay, next is sidewalk. So we are requesting that the existing sidewalk remain intact. The permit, I guess, requested that we replace the sidewalk. So the existing sidewalk is flat and level and is in very good condition. And we think it would seem very wasteful to demolish an existing black sidewalk, it's in good shape. To replace it with a new sidewalk, it would look like the existing one. Next slide. So the other request from this permit was to plant a street tree along the public rights of life. We're requesting that another street tree not, not be planted in that location. It's a very small street tree plant with a utility pole, with many overhead wires and a small tree zone in that space. The clearance between the utility pole and the edge of the canopy of the tree is very tight. The planting of another tree there, it just doesn't work when you have. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, we may have some questions, so why don't we go to start with, well, it's a minor modification, I'd like to do public for this as well. Many members of the public wish to be heard on the request for a minor modification. Going once in the room, going twice. Is there someone? And I apologize.
Chair Chairman Pitti.
Oh, is this, I see, Ms. Nickich, Stephanie Nickich, go ahead, I didn't see your hand at first and you have.
Thank you, Stephanie Nickich, ninety-three High Street. My, I have a question and is it, it is. Is this the first time that someone has requested as a minor modification? Being let off of the street and, you know, the tree and sidewalk ordinance that was put into the zoning of just a few years ago? Just a question.
And this thing which I'm going to refer, you know what, I, fair enough, a second, good. Ms. Nickich, I'm going.
I'm going to refer to this board on the answer back. Thank you, yeah, it's by knowledge, by recollection, I believe there may have been one application that had this condition previously. I think it may have been before the twenty-one, it could not recall the address. But I believe there needed to be a change in that context because it was a revised opinion from the Department of Public Services relative to the appropriateness of fixing the sidewalk or planting a street in a given instance, like the dollar fall that is. But I believe there was one that had taken place since then. My understanding that in the municipal context, maybe for visiting such a matter with the board. There is a provision required by the City of Z B A to look to the Department of Public Services and a decommission party, you know, advisory thinking on street landing and or sidewalk improvements for projects triggering a certain threshold. For instance, the great, that would be brought up to commit is one of those thresholds in this instance where there may be a revised opinion from the Department of Public Services. We would obviously pass it on to the board.
Very good, thank you for support. Ms. Nickich, I, I'm not sure, obviously I've heard that supports respond, I'm not sure if that addresses your question or if you have a follow-on to your question. But I'm certainly giving you the room to pose. Ms. Nickich, I'm not sure if you can hear me still, Mr. Ralph Shannon Penny. If you are, if you wish to address or follow on, but I'm certainly giving you, giving the floor to follow on.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chair Chairman Pitti, I, I didn't hear you clearly, I have no other questions.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Nickich. Any other members of, I'm sorry, any other public who are logged up remotely who wish to hear, just kindly raise your hands in the absence. That going once, going twice, if you know further hands and no hands in the room, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to question the board, beginning with Mr. Swan. Yes. I guess my first question is. Do you like the name, the former?
Nora.
Nora. And you're the owner of the house?
Done it.
Did you also develop the house or did you buy a house?
I'm sorry.
Did you also develop the house or did you buy it from the developer?
It wasn't by developer, we bought the house randomly.
Okay, all right, I, I'm just trying to, if they didn't recognize the name. So as we had a request last year for minor modification, because the materials that we use on plants, we addressed that on my, just. Now, I'm just trying to make sure these requests are all coming from the same place.
Yes.
Because last year there was a concern about materials that were being used and still the enforcement officer had the builder to come in here. I mean, that's sort of an after that change in materials.
I don't really know.
Okay, but that's what, it's all the same person, just try.
Yeah, 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 it's, yeah, you know, developer, I think contractor came and spoke to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now that I figure out how those fit together, my question is. The problem here is this trellis, this was a a project, as in the demolition control over the district, it had those historical issues. And they had to weigh on it, they did us their advisory meeting to take us. On, and as I recall, one of our members, she's young, she's still professional, she can clarify, but there was a live debate there and they kind of came up with this idea of a trellis, because there used to get more there. That was kind of a compliment.
See, I think we came up with that idea, actually.
You guys came up with that idea. So it's, I guess.
We like, we like the idea of it, we just were told by our landscaping for that it was difficult to plant something. An idea we thought we'd put a trellis there, have beautiful plantings, lovely. But I don't know if you saw the pictures with the concrete slab.
Yeah, no, I'm really, I'm qualified.
So I got the landscaper just was standing there saying, well, I don't have them, they're planting up there. Because of this, it's like about eighteen inches. So typically you have plantings and they, you know, they come right from the ground and they're about, about eighteen inches away or two feet away.
I guess.
So that's why it was just a situation of, okay, well, what do we do? Do we just put the, the trellis up on the wall and have it, and you know, without anything on it, that might be a lot.
Wasn't that anticipated when the trellis, you guys proposed the trellis?
You know, yeah, apparently it wasn't.
All right, that was my question, curious about how you got on here.
Yeah.
She asked about other recollections, she was on that one.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, this is better. I guess as a chair, I'll have. I didn't have an opportunity to look at the deputy director updated recommendation. Which is, yeah, is that in the file? What can we? I believe that was in the staff report.
It's also in the file on open job.
I, I can, you, you have the, the letter of.
Yeah, I have the two, you don't care from the.
Oh, okay, the red screen, yeah, if you don't mind, just larger than that, it's a big screen.
You can see he went on a, he played with it and found that the tree was not required nor was the sidewalk.
Sorry, can you, can you use, but I think that was easier.
Yeah, he said, as the stuff, the sidewalk is fine, although we did know that there are uneven, that's not, that spot is not our property. That's an extra neighbor's property.
That's just what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
I know that there is a path. And so the driveway is not complete.
Sorry, do you want to just, maybe to the right of that way?
So just to go back to that other image, we're supposedly the tripping, that's not our property, past our sidewalk. So the bottom part of the, that image is our neighbor's sidewalk.
Going back to the text, I just wanted to, insurance to the recommendation here. I mean, is this, is this what is? Yeah, thank you, that's actually, I'm sure this is worthy, that's why I asked for clarity. I mean, this is, as I already did right now, wasn't going to be completed as far as clarity, but then. But I think what we're talking about here is the fact that the art that you see on that federal sidewalk, but it's not reported to the property. It's not supporting the sidewalk improvements that are triggered by the work. Maybe that's what we, that's what we think is true there here. And I, I would just be very much that, because as well, it says sidewalk is by, I assume that was a bit more of a threat to the concrete itself. But we're certainly, this law is, the board is fully aware of the fact that it's continued to run with the message of that sidewalk.
Can you get that to the picture, please? Like with, there's, there's a jointer there between.
Right.
Sidewalk is level.
Right.
Is that, if we can, clarity, or is the jointer on, is that the joining of both properties or is that all on the neighbor's property?
Actually, hey, on the field of mine, I'm just going to put this screen for a moment. Could you, or could you perhaps just speak to on the aerial photograph here of the property, the showing confronted and like the sidewalk? Fireflyers, speak to those, I believe that, if we can go back to photographs and just location-wise, where are those people going to successfully? They're only looking at the clarification, but it looks like we're looking at that photograph because that probably is lively here with the local action.
Right.
So, so that's the driveway, we're not done with the driveway. And when we do complete the driveway, the idea is that the sidewalk, sidewalk will be continuous. So that you walk on a sidewalk and then a driveway.
So the top cone of the asphalt does not begin at the driveway.
We're not complete, like, we have to do that at a later date, like in a few months or something, I don't know, maybe in spring. But yeah, so that driveway is not complete.
And the, there are some joints on the sidewalk, which is pretty typical of electric rail tracks, but here's a crack here. It can, what is that, on the place of the property, was the drive on the property?
There's a crack, yes. I've put it's a level crack, yeah, I didn't call that a tripping hazard.
It was, it was the other picture though, not the dry, driveway, it was.
So I would have to confirm exactly where that ends, if that's our property or our neighbors, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I, I, I just want to say, I don't. This revised recommendation is partly the crisp endorsement of your request. So I'm somewhat, I mean, I'm prepared to follow the recommendations of the deputy director here, but I hardly see this recommendation to lie in this piece of paper. So I'm a little confused here. And in the absence of that, I, I, I would see no reason why I would depart from the original line unless there's a very clear, unambiguous provision of the original recommendation. We'll defer to the board, we're happy to follow the deputy director regardless of particular, the deputy director, the various particular detail here. Because I'm listening, I get the response, it's not, it's kind of looking here, working channeling that might be related to sidewalk supervision, the board understanding that. Also, the smallest, every, well, it's, it's, and it's, it's, I will, there's, I will, you know, I guess. I just wanted to, your sidewalk is concrete, is that correct? Was that, was that, yes, I'm okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would sort of agree with Mr. Bennett, with respect to the sidewalk, I think it's not quite crisp enough for us to, for me at least, to, to make a decision on that. With respect to the trellis, kind of like the trellis, with or without planting, I thought it was, I thought it was a nice architectural touch regardless of what you were going to have grow or not grow on it. That's just my preference. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, with all respect.
Are we in questions or?
We are, we're in questions.
I have things to say, but deliberation, so I don't have a question. All right, I guess I do have a question about the trellis, which is, you know, looking at the picture and of what you said, if you placed a doorway that was there originally. Have you thought about instead of leaving it with nothing, you know, which I guess is what's being proposed, putting, putting a decorative door frame there? So that they, even if it's not a working door, that it looks similar to, to what was, you know, allowed to pass by for the trellis. Living in an old house, I can tell you, I have a false store, a false window and, you know, which I didn't put in, I put in, I guess.
Elevation, oh no. The system for them, yeah. So you're asking, I just want to understand, you're asking, you would consider putting like just a piece opening, like that's, like, so that it looks like a door.
I mean, it seems like an old, you know, right, and there'd be a door at the center. How it was.
Could I get, I don't think this is fine.
I think, may I give some background about the door and the trellis? Or shall I wait?
Sure, no, Ms. Y'all, are you, are you still in questions?
That was my question.
Okay, let's, I'll be what it's like, what we'll do is we'll let, we'll see through Ms. Y'all's question and then response. If you wish to make one, then we'll turn it back.
So I just wanted to make sure I understand, you're asking if we would consider putting like a door frame on top of the wall.
Yes.
Since place of the organization. We didn't consider that, we kind of got rid of the door because it wasn't, it wasn't in our plan. And we really weren't interested in kind of pretending there was something. We wanted something that was, you know, really there, which is why I think the trellis was just a way to fill that void. I mean, it's, it's not that gigantic of a void when you think about the elevation. And then plantings do help that situation, you don't always have to put a penetration onto an elevation.
Okay, any further follow-up questions? All right, this side, your question.
Oh, I just wanted to fill in because Mr. Swan mentioned that this went to the historical commission. After much debate, the historical commission did agree to allow the property owner to remove the side door, which had been considered an important. The side door, which had been considered an important exterior architectural feature. And that, that, the historical commission agreed to that because attorney may had said. What about putting in a trellis to sort of visually balance the front door and the side door? And I recall that the commission was very reluctant to see the exterior door go, I can't. I don't remember being enthusiastic about the trellis either, nobody mentioned a fake door, although what have been interesting. So my process concern is that in the advisory reports, as EVA, the historical commission said, okay, a trellis substituting for the door. So my concern is, you know, applicants coming before the CBA to have. Conditions removed that were imposed by the NHC trading for, you know, down the leg, so that's the context that I experienced.
Very good, uh, any other questions from the, uh, from the board before I close out questions and go into deliberations? See no further.
I just would add, you know, about the door, for my old house, which is historic, we have false windows, I'm sure that the original construction. Put in place to balance the number of windows, but there never was, it was never a working window.
Right, right.
With shutters. Thanks.
Very good, um. See no further questions, I'll close, uh, question, the board will go into deliberations, uh, and we will start. In delivering the minor modification request that has been raised so far, uh, as well as our, um, our. Criteria, which is to, A, uh, make the determination that the deemed you request is minor in nature, that it's not a self substantial impact or change. Uh, to be perfectly granted, and B, that it is still within the, uh, the permitting, currently of our board, and that had we been presented with this. At the outset, the board, or the member would have, uh, uh, were big. So the criteria is good, but, but at least has that rigor of the points described.
Yeah, um, well, on both points, I have concerns, um, one, point one you mentioned is a minor. Um, I think it was pointed out earlier that it's very rare. For us to, um, have the fact, although a sidewalk, uh, in flying. Now, if. The, you know, Department of Public Works has said. We really don't need it here, that'd be one thing, I can't point out that my colleagues, it wasn't a very clear response, we know exactly, no tricky issues are tricky issues. Um, we know exactly where they are, so needs. Jury's out on that one, um, and then. The other criteria you mentioned is, you know, if this minor change. We have, if it be minor, if, uh, if it wasn't there in the first place, would it affect the decision? Well, if the trellis wasn't there in the first place. Um, I don't think the, the store commission was pretty clear, they wouldn't have given them. Opposed to us that you approved. I think that would have been active, and I'm sorry to put yourself back here and after what it's been, but I think that's pretty factual too. So for both reasons, I'm, I'm unable calling this line.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, and Mr. Bennet. I guess I will echo Swan's observations, I, I guess I would say. I would view the sidewalk change and the planting change as minor. Uh, and would be prepared to move ahead. In the, uh, if we had the force, as I indicated, uh, first clear, ambiguous, uh, recommendation, uh. But we don't have that, I'm not prepared to accept the rather. Ambiguous. Like, uh, email as a demonstration that there's been a change of, uh, recommendation by the part of the. As to the trellis, uh. I. This is a curious case, and that's the case originally came before us. Mr. Swan said, with a recommendation from the historical commission, and. That certainly played a role in our deliberation, so I'm not sure changing, uh, removing the trellis constitutes a minor modification either. So I'm not prepared to evaluate this under that criteria. Criteria. Thank you, Mr. Bennet, uh, Mr. Bennet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, with respect to the, uh, proposed sidewalk, uh, change and these proposed street and street planting change. Uh, I would be okay with those with a more clear statement from the, uh, Department of Public Services. With respect to the trellis, I would agree with Mr. Swan and Mr. Bennet, that the trellis was an important part of this whole piece, uh. Of, of this plan, of the important piece of the plan, coming all the way from the historical commission, so I don't think I'd be, um. In favor of, uh, or, I, I don't think I'd be able to deem this minor with respect to the trellis.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, and I'm respectful.
Um, yes, agreed with everything that's been said, and I think my attitude about the, the trellis and the other door is. Stays in the context of the fact that the, this for, as a condition for approval. Both the advice of the NHC in requiring the restoration. Or replication of the detail of the front doors around its side lights, and unfortunately, that did not happen, and so what's there does not replicate the original. So I think that issue of, of the side door becomes more important because of those other elements of the plan that were not followed as we had voted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennet, and Miss Chow.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with the board members that my concern is. That was an element of the plan that was important, getting the plan approved, so to take that away, I don't think was. Considered mine, but I wouldn't be interested if there are other alternatives, um, that might get you closer back to the, to the original. So, different elements that, that replicate the original. And for the sidewalk, I, I agree, nowhere wasteful in terms of ripping up what's there, but I would like to see further, and if. If that jointer is, is your sidewalk with, with your neighbors, I would think then in. Mandating a new sidewalk, that there wouldn't be that tricky hazard. And that, I would like to see that repaired, because. That's one thing that I see as. Sidewalks that you can drive a baby carriage or school on.
Thank you, Miss Chow, uh, so I, I mean, I, I have to agree with my colleagues, um. It may not be minor, it may still be worthy of review in a more, uh, sort of brandy and a way, so allow me to, um. Take a pause and, uh, a moment, Miss Chow, if I might just address your request, uh, before we vote and support you vote on this. Uh, and it would either be up or down, you've obviously heard the sentiment of the members, so almost with exclusivity. Uh, it seems that the request is not meant with favor of any member, though I don't need to suggest, I don't need to, uh, presume the vote of the members, but we all heard, we've heard, and it sounds like for some. There's some initial information, I, I'm happy as chair to give you a moment to take a step back and to request a continuance to come back for us. Uh, with further requirement, it may well be that this is not minor, but that's a major modification, in which case. The, um, the planning office can guide you on, uh, the notice requirements, it would require full notice of butters, um, with more refinement, and. If I may be so indulgent as to suggest sort of a metaphor of where you are, if this were a pontoon boat, you aren't floating, it appears. But there's water in various quarters of the vessel, right? So I think that maybe with further confinement, you may be able to drive that up, you may not. But there's information that is before us that has raised questions that are significant, not the least of which is, sounds like it's the sidewalk. Um, the, uh, the integrity, the architectural integrity of not just penetration, but I've heard my colleagues suggest. The trellis, uh, as an important factor, uh, and other things, and, and this is not something you need to respond to, but I just raise it so that you're not blindsided. We're happy to take a vote, which we're about to do, uh, I'm also happy to, if, to, um, indulge your, um, your moment, your request to take a step back and, uh. Think another one of this, it's totally, um, so I just want, you obviously have heard all of this, and I, I don't like to. Uh, you know, I, I don't like zoning to be by ambush, so I take this moment to sort of, maybe break it down for a little bit.
So I just wanted to try and, so as far as something that's stepping back.
If, if I can ask you to just put the mic.
No, I understand, um. In your, sort of, suggestion, like, maybe step back, that for. Sidewalk? Because that seems to be what you're.
Uh, it, no, it wasn't just that, if I, if I recall, just recollection of what I heard, I heard sidewalk, but I also heard, um, trellis, I heard, um.
I'm saying that, I'm saying, the trellis was pretty clear. I'm not seeing on the sidewalk, it's more got, like, the DPS. Person, the other state, so is it taking a step back and getting more information from him? I would want to understand.
This, this application would remain open and non-determined by its vote, so that you may backfill the finding, uh. Uh, some of the details that it appears the board members are, um, are looking for, and may or may not make a difference, but I, I just want to give you the opportunity to. You know, again, that, that indulgent metaphor, dry it up a bit, uh, because it, it seems like there's some questions, my, my colleagues, myself included, about. Whether we would have treated this the same way, had this been presented to us this way at the Alson, and that's really the standard that we're up against. Would we have voted the same way, having been in receipt of this information as presented in your request for the modification at the Alson? And members, it appears, not paraphrased or presumed, but I, I, I heard very clearly that members are saying. They would not have necessarily voted the same way, have they seen this then, and that is one of the two critical sort of, you know, tests. That we have to review a minor modification, so I want to give you the opportunity to fill in that.
I understand, so, so for tonight, like, you either have to vote all three, or you can't vote one or one.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an all, it's an all in or a no in.
Understood.
Request, but, um. I'm happy to indulge your presence, or give you the opportunity.
Yeah, no, there's something, you should find out more information from your kids, the sidewalk, do you decide on tomorrow the question, I would, tree loans, anything else to train you.
So, um, with that, and if I might, uh, Miss Chow, I'll, I think we. We've given you, uh, but when is, how much time would you like? We have two meetings about, uh, our next meeting, as swaddled, a minor modification, that will be the twenty eighth of September. Um, what is that, sorry, twenty seventh of September, after that, it's the first, sorry, the second Tuesday of October. Um, and, um, then the fourth Tuesday of October. So. Right? Fourth Tuesday, uh?
Um, October eleventh.
October eleventh, and then the, um. Thank you.
Can I just decide that right now?
Well, I mean, um, we have to continue it to a date certain, so we can continue it to a date certain, and if we need further time, we can get that out.
Okay.
If, we can continue it for now, if we've been certain, and then if you determine that you need more time, we can interact with, uh, with the settlement in the planning office and simply push further out without actually come back for us. We'll respect that, you know, that.
So we can try and put it in December.
Okay.
Twenty seventh, we just have.
All right, um, so I will, um, we'll put it in a quick vote, for the continuance on your request of minor modification, uh, this matter will be taken up, I hear the request, on the vote of the board of the. Next meeting of the zoning board, which is September twenty seventh, there is a ZVA, a little motion, go vote, and it's a second. Okay, motion's made, uh, by Mr. Swan, and seconded by Mr. Bennet, on the applicant request to continue minor modification of twenty one twenty three Walnut Street, uh, to nine twenty seven, twenty two, uh, calling the roll, Mr. Swan. Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Villal.
Yes.
Miss Packard?
Yes.
From Chair Penny, yes, it's five, the affirmative, the eyes have it, uh, Miss Chow will, uh, report seeing you on the week twenty seven. Thank you. Uh, all right, uh, moving on to the, uh, first. Public hearing, we're going to take, uh, two matters that are, uh, we pursue requests for continuances. We'll get over those, and we'll get the first substantive matter before it's even converted to the application of Wallop, really LLC, care of Lisa B. Tellman, Costa, LLC, two, uh, two hundred and two oh eight Mariner Street. This would be a continuation from August twenty third, twenty twenty two, the only surviving relief request with special permit for non-conformities. Upon request of attorney, me, from Lisa B. Tellman and Costa, on behalf of the applicant, uh, the applicant seeks to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, do you wish to be heard, counsel? Very good, uh, the, uh, CBA will just act on the, uh, request to withdraw without prejudice, um, and we, uh. Do we have any, uh, questions or comments from ZVA on that request? Miss Packard, we're waiting. Very good, uh, we have a motion to approve the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. So, thank you, Mr. Swan. Second, thank you, Mr. Bennet, uh, motion made and seconded on the motion, applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice, calling the roll, um. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mr. Swan? Yes, Mr. Bennet? Yeah, Mr. Villal?
Yes.
Uh, Miss, uh, Chow?
Yeah.
From Chair Penny, yes, uh, that is one, two, three, four, five, the affirmative, the eyes have it, voting carries, matter to be drawn without prejudice, thank you. Uh, the next matter is the third matter on our agenda, Francesca and Ryan Burke, care of Lisa B. Tellman and Costa LLC, this is the application of twenty six. Equals three, it's a special permit for non-conformities, the applicant seeks, uh, all necessary permits. Uh, to construct an addition with structure extending the primary front yard setback and adding more than five hundred square feet to the non-conforming lot. The applicant has requested a continuance to our next hearing on September twenty seventh. Um, and, uh, counsel, we have, do you wish to be heard, or would, just I don't need to press. Thank you, uh, so, uh. This is a request in nineteen seventy, do we have, uh, any comments, any questions, do we have a motion? Go vote. Second, thank you, motion made by Mr. Swan, and seconded by Mr. Bennet, calling the roll, requesting continued nineteen seventy, Mr. Swan, yeah, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Villal?
Yes.
Miss Packard?
Yes.
From Chair Penny, yes, it's five, the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, and twenty six, two, two is continued to nine twenty seven, anyone who is online and here for either of those two applications, uh. Uh, we advise the third, two hundred and four weeks withdrawn, that will be coming back to us when we apply. And, um, twenty six equals three will be coming back on nine twenty seven. Uh, all right, so now getting into the first substantive matter, this is the application of Patty Anne Bampos to that two street, uh, the applicant seeks all necessary permits. For a special permit for non-conformities to construct a dormer that extends up to the non-conforming front and rear yard setback of the existing structure upon four and one. Um, this is again, uh, to that two street, and we hear from the applicant. And the applicant's request.
Good evening, this is, uh, Patty Anne Bampos.
Hello, Miss Bampos, this is, uh, Chairman Rob, Chair Penny, you, uh, you have the floor, and, uh, feel free to, uh, present, and we will move the slides as you request, uh, so that everyone here can see, and everyone online, along with yourself, can see.
Okay, should I assume that everyone on the board has read this, uh, intro memo, and therefore I should just summarize, or should I just read it?
No, I, we, we have read it, we received all the material in advance, so I invite you to, uh, to simply pull it or summarize as you see fit, uh, you're welcome to read it, but know that we have already read.
Okay, so basically, um, this, this half of the house is non-conforming for front, rear, s- one side setback. Lot coverage and open space. I am hoping to get approval to construct a shed dormer. To put on the backside of the house, the rear of the house, uh, that has the greatest, um, shallow slope. I'm trying, well, I have submitted a design that complies with the exempt dormer guidelines established in two thousand nineteen, so basically. I require a, an upward extension of the front and rear setbacks. Um, the first portion of the house in the front is from sixteen fifty seven estimated, and the back portion is estimated at seventeen twenty five. It's basically less than one hundred square feet that will be added as far as headspace on the second floor. But definitely very important as far as living and functioning, mostly in the bathroom. Um, if we could go to the next slide. And then the next slide. The zoning matrix has a, a small typo under max lot coverage, uh, the, the existing and proposed should both say forty eight point seven. And just to clarify, the, the mean elevation height should say twenty seven feet, nine inches. I mean, excuse me, the height is twenty seven feet, nine inches, the mean elevation is twenty two feet, one and a half inches. I mean, excuse me, the height is twenty seven feet, nine inches, the mean elevation is twenty two feet, one and a half inches. Next. This is um a site plan. Um. If you can look at the lower right corner, um the house is not positioned. Correctly with the street, that lower right corner exists as two point six feet from that corner to the sidewalk. I'm sorry, is there feedback or a question?
No, I'm getting you.
Okay, um the the dormer is pulled in three and a half feet. So the total distance from the corner of the dormer to the sidewalk would be six feet, three inches. Next slide. And these are very um very quickly, just uh quick snapshots of the house as it exists right now. New cedar shakes on the Water Street side, new clipboard siding on the Neptune Street, and we can just go through. Next. And this is the backside of the house showing the the long slope, this is two layers of wood shakes. That are on the house that um do need to be updated. Next. Uh this is my neighbor across the street, number one Neptune Street, and then behind, these are houses on Water Street. Next. And this is showing an opposite um view, moving down Water Street, going towards town. Um that. Is number two hundred Water Street, uh the Spillmans, they would be the most direct neighbors actually looking directly at. The shed dormer. Next. And another perspective uh looking up Neptune Street, that is number four Neptune, um the White Building. Next. This is an overall schematic of the existing elevations and proposed elevations. Um. I'm gonna guess AA and BB are the most significant, just to take a look at. Um. Yeah. So the uh you know, we have the exterior dimensions, interior, you know, there's a lot of information on these slides. As far as the. There are three spaces that are currently under that salt box. Um a bathroom, a closet, and then a study that's just mess. Um you can see by lifting this up. Um to a shed dormer with the uh vertical six foot ten inch. Interior dimension would dramatically help with living area. Under what is the um current roof line. Next. This is a view um existing and proposed, what. House currently looks like from an elevation perspective and dimensionally. Um the bottom right is probably the most significant to show that. The uh roof line would be exposed, um three, three feet, six inches on each side. Um. Three windows across, one for each, one for each designated space and two skylights that technically. Look like they're in the attic, but they actually um are open to both of those rooms. Uh because both of those rooms do not have ceilings. Um in them. Next. And this is a view from um the opposite side, just to show the opposite side of the view. Um. That is pulled in one, one foot, six inches. Um from the, from the gutter line and. You know, it does not extend above the ridge line, uh there's a slight change in slope, um no windows on the sidewall. Next. This is just an overview of the bathroom space and is not filled in to the left. Um I have to see how it feels as far as filling it. Next. So what I realized last year, um my first go around with the application is that it was very important for people to. See my neighborhood and understand that I would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. By viewing um many, many, many houses around me that have um quite interesting structures. If we could, next. Again, this is my neighbor that is directly on the opposite corner of Neptune Street. Um they have, you can see the original building, and then there's a two-story and one-story additions. With solar panels on the back. Next. This is five and seven Neptune Street, moving up the street, number five is a three-story. House, it's been three-story and has um front and back. Shed dormers and has had that for many, many years. Number seven has solar panels on it. Next. This is a little further up the street, um fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen Neptune, you can see the size disparity. Currently on the street, eighteen is the White House to the left, and fourteen sixteen is a a multifamily, there are three families in that property. Um right now. Next. This is one side of fourteen sixteen, that shows, if you can see at the back, a roof deck. I think on the second floor. Next. Uh this is one street over, moving over to Madison, also a a corner lot, uh similar to my own, with doghouse dormers in the front. Next. This is a different angle of um Madison Street. Um number two is gray, number four is blue, just showing the variety of what can be seen from the street. Um I can't say that these are doghouse dormers, these are doghouse doors that lead out to the roof deck. And then number four has a third floor balcony or deck. Next. This is number five Madison with a roof deck, and then it also has a shed dormer on the back. Next. This is number five viewed from the back, when you're viewing from Hill Park. Um you know, an interesting structure with, again, that roof deck. Next. Uh this is number seven Madison with a complete gen dormer. Next. This is number nine Madison um with a gable and shed dormer and a roof deck. Next. This is fifty seven Purchase Street, which is at the opposite end of my property, so if you're moving up Neptune Street away from the water. With a shed dormer and a roof deck. Next. This is one street over, this is sixty five Purchase with a roof deck. Next. Um moving in the opposite direction, one street over, this is eight Harrison Street with um third floor, very enlarged windows. That are different from the rest of the building, I think that was done in twenty twenty, but I am not one hundred percent sure. Next. This is one seventy four Water Street, um which I believe this was done in twenty twenty. Um first period seventeen ten with an, oh, that's supposed to be inset, but insert roof deck. Next. On the backside of Water Street, this is um a picture showing double shed dormers that are almost flat. Um to the view, um viewed from the rail trail. Next. This is on the corner of Harrison and Neptune, so again, the an opposite corner from me. Um moving up Water Street. You cannot see the shed dormer very well, it's to the left, and then you see the roof deck above the screen and porch. Next. This is one ninety four Water Street, which is four houses away from me, with double shed dormers on the front and back. Next. This is one ninety eight Water Street, which is literally two houses away from me. The uh contemporary home with a lot of interesting massing. Next. This is the view from Neptune Street to see one ninety eight Water Street. Next. Uh this is two oh nine Water Street, the front, and actually, the doghouse dormers are on multiple sections of the property. On the backside of this is a Nantucket Dormer. Um next. And just moving down Water Street, visible from my house, this is two twenty five. Water Street with a shed dormer in the back or the water side, and then doghouse dormers on the street side. Next. Uh this is two twenty nine with, I'm not sure if we can call these window shed dormers, but to obviously give head height in um by the windows. Next. This is two forty nine to two fifty one Water Street, um that was converted from a two-family back to a one-family. With an attic dormer on both sides of the attic space. Next. This is the same property, just a view of the other side of the property. Next. This is two sixty five Water Street, um another salt box in town, seventeen ten with a roof deck, plexiglass roof deck. Um over a bump out that has, I'm up in there for apparently quite a long time. Next. So I wanted to show all of those pictures because. I do not view my neighborhood as just one street, I view my neighborhood as many, many streets all around me, making up. And very interesting array of homes in the area. So this is a special permit for non conformities, and I just want to confirm that there are no new non conformities created with this project. This is, I'm requesting a shed dormer to be constructed on the house. That is an upward extension of a pre-existing nonconforming front and rear yard setbacks. Proposed change will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. As there is no increase to the overall footprint of the home, the shed dormer is is withdrawn into the envelope. The dormer is subservient to the original structure, the home remains as a single family use. Um the proposed change will blend in with the eclectic homes already existing in the neighborhood. And I do have um one hundred and ninety seven supporters. That I brought these drawings to door by door and talked with them, and um they signed on a variety of sheets. That is, I believe, a separate attachment, but within the file online. Um so when we talk about um not more detrimental. I know that the term substantially means to a great or significant extent, and the term detrimental means. Tending to cause harm, I've seen this in numerous minutes that I have read. Therefore, it's not enough for the proposal to be different than that which is around it, but it has to be. Great or significant, it has to cause great or significant harm to the neighborhood. As compared to the existing structure. And I truly do not believe that that is the case. That a shed dormer is physically, emotionally, mentally, any way that you want to cut it would be harmful. To my neighborhood. Next. These, these last two slides are a basic summary of projects that I felt were relative to my project for different. Different variables, either they were a corner lot, they were an upward extension. Um they had dormers that, but they were all approved by the board. In the last two years, so the most recent one um was two fifty seven to two fifty nine Water Street. And there was very minimal discussion on this upward extension, they want to do um. An addition on the second story over the first floor in the rear, on the ocean side of the property, it's. An upward extension of nonconforming side and rear yard setbacks, which is exactly what I am requesting and need approval for. Then there is thirty four Ashland Street, which was approved again this year. They um applied to construct a rear addition and an attic shed dormer. That was twenty one feet in length, that extended their nonconforming primary front yard setback. And they intensified their lot coverage. Um which was approved, and they are also on a corner lot. Sixty four Liberty Street was approximately a year ago, um a very visible location. On the corner of Federal and Liberty Street, they um petitioned to construct the one and two-story additions, adding a minimal one hundred and twenty eight square feet. They were also an upward extension of nonconforming front and your, front and rear yard setbacks, which again, I am asking for the same approval. However, they are on a corner lot as I am, and they would be intensifying the lot coverage to sixty percent. Which. You know, I would not be intensifying, I have no new non conformities. And they literally, that house sits right on sidewalk. As you can see by the setbacks, next. Three sixteen High Street um was also approved just over a year ago, they wanted to construct the rear addition, adding over five hundred square feet. They were on a corner lot or are on a corner lot, um they actually were creating a new non conformity. The rear setback setback um would be the new non conformity, and that project was approved. One fifty nine Water Street, again, down the road from me, um renovating the existing structure and raise the roof in the rear of the house to create full head height in the rear portion of the second floor. They were an upward extension of nonconforming side setbacks, um that property also sat right on the sidewalk. And last, two fifty, two forty nine, two fifty one Water Street, which was approved two years ago to revert a two-family to a one-family. Add over five hundred square feet, second story rear addition and an attic dormer twenty seven feet in length. This was an upward extension of the side setbacks, and they intensified the lot coverage with project, and it was approved. So I'm just hoping that, you know, these last two sides, sl- slides, oh my goodness. Especially just show that, you know, all of these houses, houses in the city contribute to the character. And they're all being approved for projects to make them more livable. And that basically is, is what I am hoping for, I am hoping for a shed dormer. To help me live in the space that I do have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Bampos, um for a very clear detail. We will close out for the public hearing, and at this point, I would go to uh anybody else, anyone in the room here at the. Senior Center, if you'd be heard, just uh in the office, and um take the microphone, just give your name and address, and um.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I. Not sure quite what to say after that tour of the the larger neighborhood. Um my name is Richard Lodge, I live in fifteen End Street. And neither my name nor my address appear among the hundred and ninety seven names on the position. Um. I just want to point out a couple of things, but I guess that tour of of the variables. On many streets uh near. And not so near Neptune Street. Uh shows. In some ways, how far I think the city has strayed from true sense of historic. Preservation and historic character. There's some nice homes on there, and there's some shocking examples of overreaching, overbuilding. No accounting to taste, I guess. There's some nice homes on there, and there's some shocking examples of overreaching overbuilding. No accounting to taste, I guess. I feel like. This house that we're talking about isn't like any of those houses. It is so distinct, it is so unique. It's one of the bare handful of first period houses in the city. And of that bare handful, it's one that is pretty recognizable as a first period house. And that's what makes it so unique in one way. Um, I want to point out that I believe the owner, the other side of this house, two Neptune Street, submitted a letter to the board. And he, I don't know the man, I'm not speaking for him, but he clearly expressed his concern, anything about. Uh, concern about possible permanent structural damage in his investment in his part of the building. And just for the record, I believe in a letter, he actually understated the age of two Neptune Street by about a hundred years. So it's not two hundred and fifty years plus, it's much more than that. Um. I, I just, this is kind of one of those offbeat little things, but you come into Newburyport and you go to Rich Hills. And you can buy chachas there. And one of them is a refrigerator magnet of two Neptune Street. And it looks a few years ago, before all of the additions that are on it now. Um, my house, which is circa eighteen-hundred, is not on a refrigerator magnet, nor are any of the much more famous historic buildings in Newburyport. But this one, because of the location, because of its unique architecture, um, and its age. It's iconic. Uh, refrigerator might be a little tacky, but it's symbolic of something. Um. And it is just a couple of other quick things. I think that. I think that approving a shed dormer, it would be really terribly inappropriate for this first period house. Now proving this dramatic change to Neptune Street, I think will destroy an iconic landmark, the Joppa Waterfront. And it will affect not just the neighborhood, but the city of Newburyport. Not that it's going to damage people's psyche, but it affects us folks when major changes happen, that historic buildings. Taken to the point where they're no longer what they were, and they're no longer really recognized as historic. This house, for its age, its history, and its location. Is really a unique landmark in our city. So I would ask the board to oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else in uh the uh room, here at the Senior Center in Newport, wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, I will go to our online, and I do see a few hands raised. The first to be raised is uh Mr. John Tibido. Goodwin, I believe if you can hear me, kindly unmute your mic, we'll do the same, and I'll just give your name and address, and you have a voice.
Okay, my name is John Tibido. I live a couple of streets down from Ms. Bampos. On um the corner of Water Street in Goodwin, and I walk or drive by her house almost every day, very frequently. I think her proposed plan would complement the structure, and uh I don't think it would be a detriment at all. Uh, contrary to what the last speaker said, uh, at all to the historic look in the neighborhood. Uh, on that corner, I think it's a, a great uh minor, but great addition, and I appreciate the fact that it'll allow. Better functionality for full head flight for the residents in the bathroom there. So I totally in favor of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Uh, thank you, Tim. Uh, I will recognize uh Mr. Glenn Richards, Mr. Richards, uh.
Yep, thank you, Glenn Richards, six Ken Street, just speaking uh behalf of myself. Um, I would, I would echo, actually, I would agree with, I think it was Mr. Dodger's remarks, um, very interesting. When I, the word that came to my mind was a bit of a rogues' gallery of old houses that have had. Um, in probably more than half of them, the alterations have not been to the better, but anyway, that's one point. Anyway. Very briefly, I sympathize with Ms. Bampos' problem. When that house was built, they probably had a privy outside somewhere. Uh, they didn't have any indoor plumbing, I'm sure. Uh, so I do sympathize with, with the problem. Uh, but the, but I, on the other hand, um, the, that, that particular side of the roof is the defining characteristic of that. Uh, saltbox design, that period of house, it's very, very i- iconic, and, and as you all know, it's in a very prominent location, very, very visible. Um, so, you know, I don't know, I, maybe, I would encourage uh the architect and the, and the owner, maybe they could. Reach a compromise with a, a modest uh dormer that did not start at the roof, at the ridge line. And was not nearly so wide, uh, that I think in previous um presentations, uh, Ms. Bampos showed photos of um. Saltbox houses that had small, you know, modest dormers that still, you know, even though they're, they're still not. Period appropriate, at least they don't totally destroy the whole form and, and look of the structure so that, you know, it's, it's almost unrecognizable anymore. And um, so, you know, I think that the argument that uh, that was made, the belief by the applicant, that, well. Just about every other house in the neighborhood has been altered, you know, so why not one more? I actually think that that argument works against this change in that, you know, why add to the problem, you know, if, if. Uh, inappropriate alterations are being made. So uh, I'd encourage the board and the applicant to maybe take another look at. Doing something considerably more modest that wouldn't do such destructions that were flying. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Richards. Uh, recognizing uh Mr. Colton, uh, Colton John, sir, you have a voice.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Colter John, hello, Tom Colter John, sixty-four Federal Street. Co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust opposes this proposal. Hello?
Uh, we, we can still hear you, Mr. Colton.
Okay, the trust opposes this proposal in the strongest terms possible. This building is a post and beam structure. The way post and beam framing work is that the entire frame, which is actually pegged together, is one piece. And can be figuratively picked up and moved anywhere. It is self-supporting and integral. All members of the frame relying upon all the other members for structural strength. Reframing the roof to raise it will remove a large portion that gives it both strength and resistance to racking. Racking is when the frame is forced out of clump. It basically destroys the integrity of the frame and the purpose of post and beam construction. Most modern structural engineers are totally unfamiliar with historic houses and first period houses in particular. The owner of the other part of this building, Mr. Wiseman, is absolutely correct. His unit would be adversely impacted and also lose its structural integrity. He should not be forced to pay or deal with the applicant's desire for more space. This is an upward extension of a very prominent early saltbox house right on the street. There are no grounds to support a special permit. It would be a detriment to the neighborhood and the house. Its main architectural feature would be lost. That other houses in the neighborhood have been severely altered does not make it right to allow it to happen to this house. This is not something should, that should be imposed on the other half of the house. This is not something any of us would want to happen to us if we lived in the other half of the house. So please vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colton. Uh, I see the hand of uh, Mr. Jack Davis. Mr. Davis, uh, you have a voice.
Thank you. My name is Jack Davis. I live at thirty-five Purchase Street, which is just uh two streets away from Neptune Street on the corner. Uh, I've met Ms. Bampos, my wife and I both. We are in support of her request uh for this authorization for the shed dormer. This will keep a very old house livable in a modern age. It is a very modest change. It is in keeping with the character of the house, and it'll allow her to continue to uh live in and love this house and take care of it in the future. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you, sir. Um, seeing uh no additional hands in the audience. Just a moment. Yeah, I do see uh two additional hands. I'll recognize Stephanie Nikic. Ms. Nikic, you have a voice.
Uh, thank you, Jim Petty. This is Stephanie Nikic, ninety-three High Street. Um, I, I wanted to uh agree with the comments of Tom Colter John, Glenn Richards, and Richard Lodge, and. Point out, for what it's worth, that one of the um examples in what someone called the rogues' gallery. Um, which is almost across the street from two Neptune, was a poster child of why we had to um. You know, why the city had to put in to place some dormer guidelines and requirements in two thousand and nineteen. So a lot of those examples were, were the, the reason for the city trying to stop bad dormers. Um. I also wanted to talk about the petition that was presented, um, and. Uh, I think that petitions like that, which are very broad, lots of people, not a butters, um, all of them, uh, most of them. Um, is, you know, is useful in a legislative process, but really is irrelevant to a zoning uh relief process. The most relevant uh document I saw. Yeah, um, in the file is the letter from the gentleman who owns the other half of the house and his concerns. And as Mr. Colter John said, his concerns about the structural integrity of his own home because of this. So I hope that the um, the board will give all the weight to his comment and not to a, a wide petition of people who. You know, who, who don't have to suffer the real consequences of what might be happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikic. Um, and I see the hand of Ray Coleman. Uh, Ray Coleman, if you can hear us, uh, you have a voice, and uh.
Thank you very much. Um, I am in, um. I follow along with Jack Davis says about her home. Um, it's a beautiful home. She's taken really good care of it. And it's my understanding she has already scaled back on the size of her potential dormer. Um, I also wonder if the other side of her home has already been modified, because if you look at the difference between that side. And Patty's side, Patty Anne's side, you know, there's a dramatic difference. So, you know, could that have created any structural issues? To the um, to the house as well? I mean, um, you know, it's been, it's been modified, so. I'm all for it. I think we've created beautiful homes in the area. Everything, um. Everyone is different, and it makes walking down the streets really special to see all the uniqueness um of these, all these period homes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Uh, anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Um, Ms. Nikic, I see your hand is still up. Do you, you wish uh to uh take the floor once more? I uh, I will assume not uh anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application. Uh, I see one uh new raised hand online, and it's simply uh one of Megan. Uh, Megan, if that, uh, if you can hear us, you have, you can just unmute your mic. Give us your, your full name and address, and you have a voice.
Hi, I'm sorry, it's not Megan. My name is Jeffrey Holmes. I live at thirty-two Franklin Street. I'd like to just reflect on what the people from the Preservation Trust are saying. They were commenting on the structural integrity of the building. I'm a general contractor here in Newburyport, and I'd like to say that the modern engineering. Um, would definitely not let that building be structurally compromised. Um, let's not forget why people came to Newburyport. All these mentions about changing the dormer sizes and reducing them and whatnot. Let's not forget why people came here. People came here to be able to live their life and, and do the things they wanted to. They changed the buildings. I understand that historically, the city wants to remain somewhat intact. I live here. I've been here for fifty years. Um, my family's been here for over a hundred, and I totally understand where the city's coming from and wanting to preserve that integrity of the history. But this building, I understand the whole magnet thing and being on the waterfront, it's a beautiful view down there. But she has accommodated and adjusted the size of her dormer, and I'd really like to see this project go through. Thank you very much.
Very good. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else who can make a clue? All right, seeing uh no additional hands, I will close the public comment portion of our public hearing. We will go to the question board again with Mr. Swan. Now we've seen this proposal several times. Think all of the backs are on the table at each time. Uh, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Swan. Uh, I have no questions. All right, uh, Ms. Swan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, Ms. Bampos. Last time you were in front of us, um, you had a proposal, and can you just give me a very brief uh. Synopsis of the differences between this proposal and that proposal?
The last time, you mean in November?
Yeah, the last time. Or is it just the same proposal?
Uh, you know what? I didn't even look at those last notes because they were irrelevant. I believe I was lifting the back wall.
Can I just, can I just interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
With, with respect to the. The plans in front of us.
Yes.
The architectural plans or the engineering plans, are, are those the same as what came before us in November?
No.
It is a new plan set. Okay.
These are, this is a completely new application.
Okay, I know it's a new application. Uh. Okay, uh, all right. Well, I think one of the prior meetings, um. We had, I had asked, or one of the other members had asked if you had spoken to your party wall neighbor regarding um. The last plan, so I'll ask that question again. Have you spoken to the party wall neighbor with respect to this plan?
No, I know, my neighbor does not, you know, I hear a lot of feedback on the um, when I'm answering, I'm not sure how to turn that down. Um. My, my neighbor does not want any type of dormer, although. His request to the zoning board was that the three feet, six inches be maintained is the best of my understanding, and that's um. Part of the, part of the letter that he submitted, uh, requesting the zoning board maintain that setback, which he also requested. In a letter last year, and um, this is accomplishing that request.
I see. Uh, okay, and then finally, uh, again, at one of the prior meetings, uh, the prior application, we had. I had asked specifically about uh whether an engineer had, had looked at these plans with respect to the, the timber framing. And the uh, the removal of certain elements of the timber framing to accommodate the dormer. And I think at that one time you said no, I just wanted to make sure that that answer was still the same or. Or if you had had discussions with respect to that.
So do you mean the pearlins that are buried in the actual roof itself? Or when you mean timber framings, do you mean the rafter that extends from the ridge line all the way down to the kitchen? Which, which do you mean?
Well, I mean, the truly structural elements. By understanding the pearl and hold the roof, but the rafters and the posts and the beams hold the building. So yes, the rafters, the posts.
Those are all staying. Those are all staying.
Well, how will you cut, how will you, will they remain in place then? Don't they hold up the existing roof? And you're going to cut away a part of the roof to build the dormer, correct?
Yes.
Right.
So I know he has a beam, B forty C plan that I did not attach with these drawings. And the rafters, it says, see the plan, which I did not attach. I thought it was more important to get an approval for the concept before worrying about submitting the framing documentation. But those, those vertical elements, the, you can see the two, it looks like they're dotted lines or segmented lines with the six in the triangle, those are staying. So everything that is old is staying in place. And I don't have the framing plans in front of me. I apologize. I don't want to take anything significant out. It's beautiful.
Okay, so just with respect to the engineering portion, the answers.
I'm sorry, I can't, I really can't hear you.
So there is no sort of change to the answer of whether there was an engineer that discussed this with you or not?
The engineer did these drawings and has been in, these are engineering drawings. Angelinas is a structural engineer. He has been in multiple times to look at the beams.
All right. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
What is the percentage of the roof that will be covered by the dormer?
My calculations show that the the roof would take up sixty-four percent. The dormer would take up sixty-four percent of the roof. And if the board is interested, I also calculated the attic dormer of two forty-nine Water Street, which comes in at sixty-two percent. And the attic dormer of thirty-four Ashland Street, which comes in at sixty-six percent. Although this, neither of those applications were questioned about the, about the surface. So I would be sixty-four percent.
Thank you.
All right, let's go.
I guess following up on Mr. July's question about about the pearloin, the pearlins, I guess the call. Just the engineering plan says that the existing pearlins should remain or remove per client option. And did I understand you to say that your option is that everything is remaining?
So the pearlins themselves are the small ones that are horizontally embedded into the backside of the shingles. And in two thousand nineteen, I removed the front attic roof to reframe to support four solar panels. And what we saw was that the pearlins were warped and dry and had shrunk in their position. They really weren't doing anything. But because they had been embedded for three hundred years, they were just there. So I am probably ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent sure that they are not structurally doing anything right now.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Ms. Bampus, for your responses. I don't really hear the questions that my colleagues have come in the past. So it must be very individual, right? Before I'm going to close that portion of the voting hearing, and we will go into deliberations.
Could I?
Hello? Yes.
Could I add something?
Sure.
As far as the opposition letter from my neighbor, I know that the roofline of two point five is already a separate slope versus my roofline. And most people actually don't even realize that there is a separate portion because it's not very visible from the street, at least when people walk by, they don't even acknowledge it. Let's put it that way. He was concerned about the first floor kitchen window and the light that's coming into the home. But the first floor kitchen window is actually in the corner of the two properties and is already obstructed or overshadowed mostly by the deck that is above it. The second floor bathroom window is also in that same corner. And the light will not be obstructed as the exposure, the sun exposure has great afternoon sunset light. So that is actually not what I would consider a huge issue, given the current conditions. And as far as the construction impact, when I renovated my kitchen in two thousand nineteen, I went ahead with the engineering drawings and shored up the walls on the first floor, the walls and above the kitchen windows in preparation for a dormer. So because the engineer had put certain things in place and it was just reasonable while the walls were open to actually do that work instead of waiting downstream and then opening up walls. So I pulled a permit for that renovation and we did everything. It was inspected at the time. And so I'm really pretty confident that the construction of a dormer would not impact the smaller portion of his bathroom wall buts up to the back of my chimney. And that's something that wasn't touched and really can't be reached. So I also know, and I do completely believe that if the homeowners of two point five lived there or if they had inherited this side of the property, they would understand the issues that I have that are created by the lack of head height on the second floor. And, you know, therefore my desire to add the dormer, I really do truly believe that if they were on this side of the house, living here, you know, residing here, that they would understand. And but, but it comes down to it, I am satisfying their request to have the three foot, six inches away from the property line, which is part of the exempt dormer status or guidelines.
Is there anything else I'm going to do? I wanted to give you the second sort of pass in that we had we had additional commentary, but in that we've done that traditionally. That may raise additional questions from members of the board and I'm going to pass the board. I just want to hand this up. Yes, thank you. The letter from the person who shared this building was come up several times. And we will see the board here, but it's very similar to letters that I can see from him on each of the three times the proposal's been in front of us. His opposition to this is extremely familiar to us, and it's also very unusual. I cannot remember a two-family house where somebody wants to post something on one side and the person on the other side is very much pissed. And since it's come up so many times, I couldn't, couldn't, you put up on the wall here at the moment. I think we need to clarify what he's saying. He's not saying, you know, it needs to be three feet away from it. He says the upper extension by three feet. Who has mission there? And he also has a mission, which is point one. And point two, he's concerned about altering the part of the twenty-one-year-old house. Someone commented, maybe it's three hundred and forty-one house. Whether he's right or wrong, it's, it's half of the house and he has his issues. And so I guess my question to the applicant here, you know, I applaud you for lying around the neighborhood, reflecting everyone's opinions, but did you share with them that the person you shared the house with has said repeatedly, again and again and again, please don't bring this to our house? Did you share that when you reflected your opinions? Ms. Bampus, the question proposed to you by Mr. Swanton, do you wish to respond or do you wish to accomplish?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a question.
My question is, when you circulated your petition to the various neighbors and people in the neighborhood, did you let them know that the person you shared this house with is, has always been, is very much opposed to this?
Yes, yes, they are. And if I, if I could tell you, tell the board something, I have emails from my homeowner in two thousand twenty where he states, and worth saying, of course, but the impetus for this is my desire to support your plan with besto, knowing that it meshes seamlessly with something fairly similar and reasonable on our side. Parentheses, attic versus second floor, as I expect it will. And then in August of two thousand twenty, he states, ultimately, and these are emails that I can forward to the board or I can forward to the newspaper, but it just shows how things change. Ultimately, while we'd like to be good and supportive neighbors, the net result is that your proposed change is substantial enough that it would alter what makes our combined home unique. Given that we don't ultimately plan to build a dormer on our side, as they were looking into, it's simply not in our best interest. We are thinking like property owners first, neighbors second. Now, he did tell me that he spoke to someone in town who advised him that working with the NHC could be difficult and to get approval for an attic dormer on his side. And after that conversation, he decided not to pursue an attic dormer. So I feel like he supported me when it was in his best interest. And now he's not supporting he or there, there's more than one person. They are not supporting me because when they do come here for a weekend, they believe that the view would be altered. And that actually brings me to a question of the board. Does the zoning ordinance protect views?
Was there anything further that you wanted to add, Ms. Bampus?
No, that was it.
Very good. And just to be clear, although I typically say this at the outset and marry on perhaps in the commencement of this hearing, but questions that might be posed directly to us, keep in mind, it's no intended discourtesy if you don't address it in response directly. Keep in mind, however, that we certainly internalize them and express them in our deliberations, questions, and in our decisions. Your question is not all of that appears, and certainly we want to make sure everyone here understands just the procedural format. Any questions or any comments, move forward and question. We are allowed, they're so loud. I want to make sure I just know that now since it's just loud. Going through the rest of the board, and thank you, Ms. Bampus, for additional comments. The rest of the board, is anyone else wish to be heard before we move along? Okay, and in the spirit of balance, I see two hands up in the virtual audience. Ms. Nikicich and the monitor, Megan, although I understand, sir, that it's not Megan. If you or if you wish to speak, I recognize you without allowing to kind of disclose your names. Thank you. All right, seeing no additional hands either here on the board or online, and we close that portion of the voting hearing. And we will go into deliberations. And deliberations component of two thousand twenty-three, this is a special permit for nonperformance. As the board is aware and the audience may have heard, there is two principal tenets of criteria that the board must find. It must consider the application in light of whether there are, whether the proposed alterations are substantially more detrimental than existing conditions and whether there is an intensification of existing nonperforming use or dimensional control. And with that, I will go to Swanton to begin our deliberations. Yes, well, that's as with the last application. It's like reading mail.
Can't hear anything.
Hello, as with the prior couple of times, we looked at this proposal, there are no nonperformances. The issues of my mind are still very simple. It is true that we have, sometimes of time, approved upper extensions in the back of the house. Actually, well, um, this, what's different about this house, which pictures in the example, this is one of the multiple streets in town, this house, things that we'll talk about, an upper extension right there. And generally, during my tenure on the board, you have not done it. And it's not kind of pick on this particular house. It's, it's a nasty issue with an upper extension facing a major room in senior delivery, which in the past, we considered to be more detrimental to the overall city. And I continue to believe in this here. As I said earlier, I think the chair can start with this, if they go smaller, not creating a problem, but this thing is like, houses are only two and a half feet off the street, this thing's common with beams that are almost six feet off the street. That's very false to one of the business considerations. That, and some people have done this in your path of the zoning, so it's very difficult to do anymore. It is not a reason to do it here. So anyway, I, I can't could not support this the last two times, and I still cannot support it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swanton, Mr. Benny?
Yeah. I do support this application. And I'd like to give you my reason. First, I start with the the obvious city policy here regarding dormers as it relates to this word building. It's clear under section five, point three zero eight, three zero eight of the city ordinance that a dormer of this size is exempt from historical review and demolition. That's a strong and compelling city policy regardless of dormers and historic structure. That doesn't end my analysis because I believe that even though that is a very strong city policy that must inform us to a certain extent in this deliberation, I still believe the zoning board, because it has a wide spectrum to consider welfare of the community and the welfare of the community certainly involves maintenance and possible preservation of historic structures, even though they may not be in the historic district. But I don't find that a factor here, this structure, whatever it's. This structure, whatever its historic significance is dramatically compromised over the years. I will simply point to the window. Some solar panel, uh, property, none of this is historically accurate. And my view, uh, whatever historic significance this building did have has been lost over time. So I don't find the historic concerns compelling here in this case. Now, uh, somebody mentioned that there are 180 or some supporting letters here, and that is not relevant. I would disagree because uh, in many respects, the folks who have been objecting are objecting on historic grounds. And that is a community-wide concern. Similarly, if those 100 and some letters are in support, I guess they are not only in the good community as well. And moreover, there are supporting letters that are from nearby neighbors. Uh, so I take that and so I somewhat discount the notion that so-called issue has no relevance. Finally, there's been a lot of discussion about engineering concerns. Well, there's no evidence that has been supported, no relevant competent evidence that has been submitted, which with any way, shape or form to this cannot be performed efficiently and confidently. In fact, the only evidence is stamp professional engineer and the testimony from contract, who I will take as having more relevance than general uh, non-expert comments on whether or not this construction literally would not harm that structure. I take Mr. Swan's concern regarding the neighbor. This is unique, but we have a common law. We have a neighbor who's not across the street or adjacent by some beat, but actually it's right there. So, uh, that's there is some different analysis, I think, and consideration. So I think when an individual buys and lives in a house like that, there's kind of an element of compromise there on both sides. Uh, one has to assume that, you know, their rights and obligations on both sides. So in many respects, I don't see that any different than the objections of an butter uh, lived across the street. These are bestowed with the territory and buy a house and just this. Uh, and finally, I guess what I am led to, when I look at the question of what I believe guides whether or not this is inappropriate in terms of size and mass related to the neighborhood. Both near and in the surrounding areas, the evidence is compelling. This is not substantially detrimental. And it is hard for me to find one element of elements which we could rely upon to deny this.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Mr. Swan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it seems that both Mr. Swan and Mr. Bennet have their minds. I have decidedly more in the middle. I see the arguments on both sides, and I think for me, uh, an important factor here is the opposition of the party wall neighbor. I think when we're talking about the, uh, whether something is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, not including the shared wall neighbor in that definition of neighborhood is is an error. Uh, and so I think with respect to, to the opposition of the shared wall neighbor, that's significant for me. In addition, the the request, the requested relief is the upward extension uh, which would be the walls of the dormer, but the upward extension in itself and in its location is troubling for me because of the fact that it is so visible. As you are coming down Water Street heading east, it is so close to the street, six feet as per sixty-three inches that I've read the applicant. That, that gave me pause as well. And when I think about the the requirements of section nine being two A to that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-performing structure and use. And the board may consider the size, scale, massive volume and location of a proposed structure. I, I find that the, the location of the upward extension is in and of itself somewhat relative to not only the neighborhood, but the general public at large. And I think finally. I think that was, that was my final, my final. So those will be my comments. Thank you.
So I'm looking at the three document sets that were submitted in support of the application. And the projects that we saw that the applicant was referencing as example for the projects that this board has approved were projects for altering additions to houses and not for upward extensions of original houses. That was the case on 64 Liberty. Or as Mr. Swan pointed out, they were for installing dormers or increasing roof height on the rear elevations, not visible from a public way, not on a primary elevation. That was the case with the dormers on 257, 259 water. They aren't really comparable to what is being proposed here. And I look back to the minutes and applications and the debate has not approved an upper extension on a primary elevation this close to the three on primary throw fair where there's zero setback and it would intensify non-uniformities. The second set of documents I'm looking at are the photos that we saw that are actually to me inappropriate alterations that I think in public comment, it was pointed out by Mr. Swan that were undertaken before zoning laws. So those roof raisings and decks and dormers were being so out of scale and so out of proportion that they are what prompted our zoning laws and the applicant stated, you know, many, many years ago, and I think that's the case. Mr. Wiseman in his letter called it a trend, an unfortunate trend, but we have different ordinances now. And I recognize that as Mr. Wiseman pointed out, our zoning laws were put in place to reverse and slow and manage that trend with thought and intent. If we do keep comparing projects proposed to be built under current zoning with projects that were built, we had no zoning laws, then that has the same consequences not having these zoning laws. I'm impressed with the work that, that Ms. Vamples has done to represent her interests. I think she's done a fantastic job. I don't see the non-objection of people who don't live in the other half of the house can overcome Mr. Wiseman's objections. And to one of the questions from, I think the applicant, yes, zoning does concern itself with light and air. For me, if the board can grant a special privilege to this home corner to do something that no one else has been able to do under current zoning upwardly extend on a primary facade and a corner law, tiny setback, extending, intensifying that conformity. I don't see how this board could say no to any request anywhere else in the neighborhood. And to me, the neighborhood is the be caught. The city has an interest in limiting extensions of scale and massing on the street. And so because of the location, it is substantially more detrimental in my analysis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennet. And Ms. Stowe.
Thanks. I just wanted to, um, to say that I, I agree by and large with, with the comments that Mr. Bennet has made. I know this really followed along with a wealth of things that made starting really with the city made the decision that a dormer of this size does not trigger the demolition delay or the storage. And that it's, it's a dormer as a right, but for the essential of the non-performing here, right? So the city has a policy that that dormer that she's put together is not, is not out of scale or proportion. That's the city policy in having some status. Uh, and so getting to why, why the applicant is for us. Does it create a, not, it's the non-performing of the park, right? And, and does the proposal create a non-performity? I think we all agree that, that it doesn't. It just was an upward extension of the existing. So then the tough question, like everyone says, is it whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood? You know, to me, it doesn't appear that it is. There are well-drawn plans. I find that dormers themselves are pretty useful. And if you look along, you know, all over New England, you see dormers of the style. And while this may be an example of a, of a, of a house, you know, from 16, whatever the year is, that doesn't have one. There probably are a lot of other ones around because most of them have dormers. People, you know, buy homes to live in them and they have to have usable space for that to occur. And I think we need to defer somewhat to the property owner as to, as to you know, who has preserved this property in a nice way as to whether, what kind of space she needs continuing to wait there and, and contest for it. You know, and to me, it really is unfortunate that the adjoining butter doesn't agree with, with the project. And that does weigh heavily on me because I tell you, like, you're the neighbors. But most of the other people in the neighborhood that she's asked about this, since it's quite a petition. Don't agree that it, it, that it's substantially worse. And I think that you can't necessarily give one person until, like, over whether or not a project is substantially detrimental. Um, and, and to, to the, the objections of the butter. I, I can understand its concerns that it may have structural implications to this property. There are engineering plans here that, that seem to say that it can be talked about having any structural impact. And that, you know, if there is damage, then you'll have a claim and she'll have to, she'll have to take care of that. Right? So I guess in my, in, you know, my, I would mean.
Thank you, Ms. Stowe. Um, you know, I'm torn, uh, in my thoughts of this. I look at the first period moment, I look at these great reference to the leading endangered species-esque nature of those, of that part of living environment. Uh, and every time we add a dormer of any kind or any operation, you know, we, we make an alteration. Whether it is detrimental or much less substantially detrimental, you know, is more fluid analysis, my view, and it has to be one of them that now we will lend this of our time and our place in our building environment. That's the unfortunate rigor of what we do, I guess, as a board and perhaps what we all do, just that was very important, you know, amongst this building environment. I, I, I actually move by whatever we have, a direct butter, um, whose base, in connection with an application. I don't necessarily give the veto power or any greater wing, but I I do take, well, you know what, perhaps I do give some reparational weight to someone more closely proximal to potential perceived impact. And maybe as human being, that's my point. Uh, maybe it's all of ours, but I know it's mine. I move by in a better sense right there that has a, a direct perspective and a negative about this. I, I have to qualify that to be fair with the commentary, previous view of that very single visual at previous time, and I have analyzed it to determine whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, or evaluated, made of religious sensibilities, but we're all entitled to change our minds. Uh, along the way, I don't know why this vision they have. I, I'm really torn, you know, by the same time. I have to run it through the lens of this very of the structure that we're governed by and we're better at words, it's a legal criteria. And it is, um, it is less dynamic than it probably could be or should be, but in the midst. Whether or not this proposed alteration is not just detrimental, but substantially more detrimental, that's a hybrid. And while I have personally, um, aligned with the preservation of integrity of this kind, this part of our building, the city, the joint. Uh, like everything, it must change. If we were to hold straight to that standard, we'd have no homes, no structures with modern kitchens, with spaces to hang clothes and a whole heap of other things that did exist in the nineteenth century that we kind of leave out there. So I also look at these structures as, um, as living elements in themselves, and relatively relevant, often changing that we I mean, this, I, I, I'm not sure of role call yet, but I'm inclined to I'm inclined to support it, but well, I don't think that I can say good faith that is substantially more detrimental. And if I'm being honest, as I always try to be uh, myself, I do not think I can say some of the things I don't like it that is therefore substantially more detrimental and married to the legal standards that I come to the conclusion of, I think, my fifth or last, uh, so I, I think the applicant has done their homework. I think the applicants present incredible data that you can rely upon. If we so choose, I can give you the engineering and related destruction process data. I feel like they can be this work without being damaged. If there is damage, we record and address it exists. So, um, I, I guess I have to take that into account. And, uh, feel that I'm probably clients supported for the reasons. So those are my thoughts. Any other comments? The board on deliberations on the legal standard or anything else? All right, um, seeing none. I will invite a motion. We have a motion and we have a second.
I will move to a special permit for not requiring the application, twenty-two dash twenty-two, fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Motion was made by Mr. Bennet. Second. And, uh, Mr. Swanton has seconded the motion. How in the world, uh, the maiden second, uh, Mr. Swan. Mr. Bennet, yes. Uh, Mr. Swan, yes. Uh, Mr. Bennet. I am going to vote yes. So we have, uh, how many guesses do we have? Three. Uh, so, uh, three S's, uh, three in the affirmative fall short of required for an order for the application to successful. Uh, the, um, the motion does not carry the voting fails. Uh, and the application is denied and, uh, Mr. Vamples, uh, the, uh, I should make sure that you heard the vote, the vote was three in the affirmative, uh, two in the negative, uh, which falls short of the standard of order required to successfully application, therefore now. I wish you the best of luck and thank you for your time and your attention. Moving on to the next application we have is matter of Douglas and Shane's twenty-two excellence street. This is a special permission on performance. You construct a single family addition to the rear and side of a predecessor non-performing two thousand and seventy. May we hear from the applicant, Richard?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas Shane representing the applicants. Robert and Elizabeth Rosskin, who are here with us this evening, uh, also with me this evening, Scott Brown, Scott Brown Architects, who was the architect on the project. I'm just passing out a copy of my presentation, just in case you can't see it on the, on screen. And I've also, um, as of this afternoon, we got the last of our, um, support letters. So I just gave you a copy. We uploaded them, but I, it was just today that we got the last of them. So I've given you a copy of the support letters as well as a copy of the assessor's map showing the director butters from whom we did, in fact, we'll see, um, letters of support, um. So with that, I can stop my presentation. If we could go to the next slide, please. Again, I've done the shame from dinner in Nicholson. My associate Colleen is not here with me. She's online. We have Robert Elizabeth Roskin here as well as Scott Brown. If you go to the next slide, please. As a project summary, the Grostens would like to add a first floor primary suite. Onto the back of their pre-existing non-conforming townhouse. The Grostens would like the ability to have a single. First story living area, which would comprise of a single bedroom. Bathroom and a small laundry area. And by adding on this single story addition to the back of the home, it will allow them to stay in their home longer. And to age in place, which, as we know, many of our residents are hoping to do, but when you got a second floor bedrooms, it makes it very difficult. We are decreasing the side yard setback from the pre-existing nonconforming seventeen point three feet. To four point six feet. Because we're doing that, it was determined by the zoning enforcement office. That this planned conversion would require a special permit from this board under the nonconforming uses and structure. Section. We could go to the existing conditions. The property is actually one half, one half of an existing two unit duplex. Style townhouse condominium, similar to what I think you were just looking at, so it's two units. The existing, the lot itself is pre-existing, nonconforming, only has the frontage. Full-size lot, just reduced frontage of ninety-six feet where a hundred and twenty feet are required. The existing structure itself is pre-existing nonconforming in two respects. First of all, the front setback is at fourteen point one feet. As the board will recall, it's a required twenty-five foot setback. Although I don't think any of the houses on the street meet it, but nevertheless, that is a pre-existing nonperformance. And as I mentioned previously, the right side setback, which is currently at seventeen point three, where twenty feet is required. Is the second of the two nonconformances with respect to the building. We could go to the zoning matrix. I'll just give a quick rundown. As you'll see, the only things that are being impacted of a lot coverage. We currently have seven percent lot coverage. This is a good sized lot for. For downtown. We're only at seven percent and even with our addition, we would still be at just under or at ten percent. In lot coverage. All of the other matrix numbers will stay the same, except of course. The side A setback, which is, as we've shown, we're going from seventeen point three to four point eight. And I'm sorry for the repetitious nature of some of this, but. The lot is nonconforming as the frontage. However, there will be no changes onto the lot itself. And the structure is not forming as to the front setback. We're not affecting that. The side setback, we are reducing. But the proposed, and again, it's a one-story addition. Will result in the operation of the pre-existing nonconforming right setback. The front setback would be unaffected and there will be no new nonconformities created whatsoever. With respect to your criteria for a special permit, in this particular case. The existing structure, as I've said, is a duplex style residential townhouse. The proposed addition will in no way change the use of the structure, other than making it easier for the current owners. To have some single living, single level living, allowing them to stay in the home. I I told you that we're pre-existing as the nonconforming as the frontage and the front side setbacks. And whether or not the proposed use, extension or alteration would intensify. Again, we are intensifying that side A setback down, reducing it to four point eight feet. And the front setback will stay untouched. The proposed addition, if we could go to the next slide, please. One more. There we go. Thank you. The proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental. Detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure of use. The proposed addition is actually modest in size. It's only four hundred and eighty square feet, single story. As you'll see in a moment, let me show you the elevation drawings. The addition will blend in. Quite nicely with the existing structure. It makes it look like a cohesive building. And it is added to the back of the structure. So you'll have very little impact. On the view of the structure from the street as you go by. It's really in the backyard, a little on the side, but mostly in the back. So. I I don't think there'll be any impact to the view from the street in any way. As I said, the change in use, the use is not changing anyway. It's residential. However, it will allow. My clients to remain in their home and age in place. As I've said, the proposed addition is modest in size. It does not trip your substantial improvement threshold under the ordinances because it is so small. Even in an exorbitant price construct, we don't come close to. Being a substantial improvement. The change will not result in overcrowding of the lot. As I've said, it's a large lot for the area. And we're only increasing the lot coverage from seven to ten percent. So we're well below the twenty-five percent threshold. And also, as you'll see again, when we get to some pictures, there is still significant separation between the two lots. Our neighbor to the right from the street view, their house is actually pushed over quite a bit. There's some vegetation in there, so it's a nice buffer. Between the homes, even with us moving closer to that set that. Although we are reducing that setback, the proposed setback is not atypical for the neighborhood. Or for Newbury Court in general, as we all know. We see houses within five feet of property lines quite often in fact. The addition is not, in fact, we go to the next picture if we could, and I'll keep talking, but at least go ahead and do the next one. There we go. I'm sorry, could we go up to the, up to that? Thank you very much. So in yellow, you can see Locust. You can see that the existing home is in the right front corner. Of the lot and I'm speaking with regard to the house to the right. As you can see, they have a substantial amount of area between their house and their. And our, our, our locus. That's a yard. The driveway, the garage for our neighbor is on the other side. So it was really nice. A buffer between, a distance between the two homes. I I if you can see it, I put in the black hash marks in the back of Locust. That's the proposed area of the. Addition. As you can see, it it. It doesn't align directly with the side of the house, but actually the back of the neighbor's home. And then, of course, there's all yards on the other neighbors in back. So we're really not imposing. On any of our neighbors by tucking this in the back right corner. We have, my clients, as as. We usually suggest has reached out. We sent copies of the proposed plan to the surrounding neighbors. I know Bob Elizabeth made an offer to the neighbors to meet with them, to go over what they were proposing to do. And in fact, they did meet with most of the neighbors, in fact, all of the abutting neighbors. And the other package I handed out this evening. Is really just, I gave you a snapshot of the neighborhood. Check box representing the abutting neighbors who have either submitted a. Written letter of support or signed the petition in support. So all of the abutting neighbors and most importantly. The folks living right next door in the, in the unit attached, they too have signed. The petition supporting what we're doing. So they're supportive, they're. Very close neighbor doing this, as are all of the abutting neighbors. So. In terms of not being substantially more detrimental. It will blend, the addition will blend in nicely with the existing home in the back right corner. Will certainly add to the aesthetics of the house, as you'll see again when we get to some drawings. It'll increase the value of the home thus, adding value to the neighborhood. It's not going to create or impose any detrimental impacts. We've discussed it with the, probably the only two neighbors that are directly impacted on either side of us. They're both in full support. They would like to see the Grostens be able to, to age in place. So we've got significant neighborhood support. We're not affecting the the roof line. It's only a single story addition. It's only four hundred and eighty square feet. And really, the only impact that we're making will be the reduction in that right side setback. But as I've said, we've got vegetation. Got a lot of space. We're not infringing on anyone's privacy or. Or views or anything for that matter. So if I could, I'll just. If we could scoot, scoot down to the site plan, which I think is two down. Yep. Thank you very much. And here, what you can see is, on the left side is our existing site plan. You can see that. We currently have a driveway to the right of my client's. Unit. And what we're proposing to do is put, if you look to the plan on the right. We're proposing to build that shaded area. On the corner of the house and then in back of it, there'd be an open deck off the back. But that faces the backyard, which you can see is. Very extensive and doesn't in any way infringe on anyone's privacy. If we could go to the next slide, please, you can get a little, just a little more close up before there's any questions. Again, you can see where. Essentially off the end of the driveway, there'd be a steps up, there'd be a covered porch. And you'll just, you'll go left into the doorway or you can walk. Under that covered section of the deck, a porch out to the rear deck. And then you can see where the proposed addition is. With that, Scott, if you just give us a quick rundown on the architecture, I'm sure you'll do a better job.
Thank, thank you, Attorney Shane. So Scott Brown, the architect for the project and. As Doug had already stated, this project is all about trying to add a primary bedroom. To the first floor levels, so the Grostens can can age gently in place. And so this project, from a design standpoint, is somewhat challenging because this is a recently renovated, built, both both sides have been recently renovated. And so because it is recently renovated, we want to keep a lot of existing layout intact. And existing features intact as well. But perhaps more challenging was the fact that we needed to. Respect the neighbors on the other side. So the drawing on the top there, that's the rear elevation. You can see sort of. That grape line there that roughly represents the common property line between the two halves of the building. And like I said, one of our challenges was to impact them as little as possible. So. We had pulled this addition away from that common, common lot line. And that forced us a little closer to the side of the lot line. Looking at that back elevation, you can see there's a door back there. That's the primary bedroom. Off to the left, there is an open porch. And on the bottom, it is the right side elevation. This is the view from the driveway. And you can see that open porch that extends roughly the length of our addition there. We've added this for two reasons. One, we thought it would be a nice architectural feature. But also, this is also intended to be the primary entrance to this building and primary entrance because it. Has fewer steps down to the way you can see those, you know, the front entryway off the, off to the left there and it's quite a few steps. So. If this is the primary entrance, you want a little cover. So that somebody who has some, potentially has some mobility challenges can get into the building easier. Next slide, please. Finally, the last sheet of there are two additional proposed elevations on the top. Fairly unadorned elevation. This is as due from from the butters, the folks on the other side of the house. Again, really no windows or anything there because we need to have privacy between the two folks. And also, this is a little deceptive because there's going to be a fence. And finally, on the bottom, this is a partial view that you will see from, if you just go back one step. On the bottom, this is a partial view of the front of this. It's a little deceptive because it's a sort of a flat, two-dimensional drawing. But off to the right there, you can see our addition in the back, the open porch. And it's deceptive because it's about thirty-two feet back. And finally, last slide. Just to look at, look at a couple of our existing elevations, the left, that's the back of the house. And on the right. That's the right side as. And with that, we will.
Well, thank you very much for your consideration. We're happy to answer any questions you might have regarding our proposal.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Shane and the Brown presentation. I am going to close that board in the public hearing. We're going to have a comment. And we'll start with anyone who wishes to speak in the room. Anyone who wishes to address the board. I see approaching the podium, if you will. If you feel great and just go to the table and.
My name is Kathleen Murray. I'm with Two Parker Ridgeway. And twenty-two Ashland Street is the home where Nancy Weir lives, from infancy until her adult years. And some of you may be familiar with. Her highly regarded work on my own way of life. Nancy continued to own this family home and lived there later in her life before moving to a life care community. Nancy, in addition to being a history boss, she was an avowed environmentalist. And she was very concerned about the infill which she thought happening all around the city of Newbury Court. So before she left Newbury Court. To move, she had a deed restriction put on twenty-two Ashland Street. She will enter the visual loss of open space and massing as the article filled in. Until the master deed for this property. Under restrictions on fine use, specifically said, the architectural integrity of the building and the unit shall be preserved without modification. And to that end, no balcony enclosure, awning screen, antenna sign, banner, other device. And no exterior change, addition, structure, projection, decoration, or other feature. Shall be erected or placed upon or attached to any such unit or any part hereof. I'm surprised that this proposed addition is before you've given the restrictions stated in the master deed. And I hope that the ZVA will consider Nancy's intention to conserve the open space around her family home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, before you part the podium, ma'am, I have a question. Do you have a deed reference for that? You're not going to pull that must have perhaps.
It's on page four of the master deed.
Is there a registry? Or you just.
Yeah. It's. Twenty-three, three, two, six, zero. And page eighty-three.
So we've got Essex South Registry, thirty-three, two, six, zero, eighty, eighty-three. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, there are no attendees in queue online, which I don't think I've ever seen. So it's really just a little, anyone else in the room wish to be heard? Sir, yeah.
My name is Andrew Simon. I live at Brussels Street at twenty-five Ashton. I'm curious about the deed because when Nancy sold the house, there was an addition put on that, so. Then that's all, it was violated. We're here to support the, the. Motion. We, just like the Grostens, we want the age in place and I think it's a modest thing that they're doing to this house. It's built as a two-family. It's always been a two-family. It's not a. One family just bastardized the way many have in this town. So we think it's okay. Addition, we certainly want the Grostens to stay with neighbors. And as they say, the the building's been modified once it was sold. So I don't know why it wasn't.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard, address the board regarding the public comment? Seeing no takers and again, seeing no one in our online room, I would like to post. this portion of the public hearing with questions from the board beginning with. Yeah, this um. The decision just came up about the master deed, I can pull it up online, it's the registry here. Um but are you embarrassed or?
I I have to be honest, I I was not, nor nor were my clients. This is news to us, um I didn't do a title search when uh you know to check it, to see if the restriction length is. But I would, I would point out that um if it's a restriction within the master deed, um the only people that have the right to change that master deed would be the Grostens and their neighbors who all support this. So I can assure you that if there needs to be a change to the deed uh to reflect that, um you know, you I think we have the support of the only two owners um in there, and we'll look into that. I I would also, I I I don't know what year that uh restriction was in in place, but I I suspected it has a thirty-year life. Um in terms of that, and so I will check on that, but um it's twenty-fourteen. How was it, twenty-fourteen? Well, it's also interesting too, because I believe after we sold twenty-fourteen, the entire building was renovated and additions were put on it, so. Uh so.
Yeah, yes, it's substantially modified.
I I can assure the board that I will make sure that my clients are not doing anything in violation of their condominium documents should this board uh act favorably. But I would also respectfully suggest that, you know, whether or not we're allowed to do this under zoning is actually a separate issue from whether or not we have a controlling covenant or deed to restrict it.
I I I guess that's my understanding, right? Yeah, you know, but if it is um it's 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 advisory on most reach is that um we can make a condition. Um we have that power, we are not beholden to follow what is in um a deed or what is in condominium documents that's strictly um uh governed by um what is in um master laws, which is condominium statute. So we're governed as per by chapter of the master laws, chapter forty. So we're basically two verse cousins of the same, but uh not to usurp the seat by stepping on his comments, I'll say this uh. Attorney Shane's time. I'll, you know, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board members, but I'm gonna just come out um on the the alignment, if you indeed do have the ascend of of all of the one hundred percent beneficial owners of the condominium under one day. I suspect that my others among my colleagues may join me in the sentiment that you you want to see an alignment of that by amendment. So that anything we prove, should we prove the request, is not in fact a violation of the restriction of the documents, it's just antithetical, I think, for us. Would be a criticism what we do, but I'll put that out there as sort of part of the horse that I would hear from the rest of my colleagues. But um that that's where I had to go in the um sentence back. Okay, moving on to a different topic, um I I um was curious about your setback here, uh if you, I guess you touched on, well. So the side yard setback is currently seventeen point three. Yes, and it's going down, and the proposal is now to the four-point eight, and this is shown. That's small, there it is, four-point eight. And that's going over to the covered porch.
Yes.
So how far is it, I mean, that's kind of tight, uh how far is it to the house? Uh is that, is that, let me picture our media spread. Fourteen sixteen wide, so it's like a little over ten feet to the house, basically.
If you could just go to the pre- the previous site plan and zoom in. So what we're seeing there in the back right corner, uh that's a dimension of four-point eight feet. So this is a little deceptive because everything that is shaded there um doesn't entirely represent the uh habitable heated area. So that four-point eight is actually to a uh column that is on open covered porch.
On the porch.
Yeah, so if this is like a year and a half of it, before the the recent sort of zoning amendments, the actual, the 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 matrix would look very different. So that dimension that you're, I think you're looking for is actually ten-point-six feet, you know, from that back right corner to the sidewalk.
I'm just trying to go forward because the other thing is, I mean, we could have accomplished the proposed addition by taking it. You have to be accurate, remember for, if you go back, then you can take that. So it's not going to be approached very so much on the sidewalk.
Well, I think the challenge with that um is we're trying to keep the existing layout of the house intact. And so that would make the width, uh if we were to sort of like um keep that right side uh side of the house and go straight back. I think that means for an addition, it's about twelve feet uh twelve feet wide. And as because because of the tapered lot line, we're getting closer to the lot line. We're getting closer to the setback uh regardless.
Okay, well, those were my questions, thank you.
Uh I have a couple, just a couple, uh the deck, your neighbor's deck, would you describe that? Is it elevated off the ground as the?
The neighbor to the right?
To the left. Your your common name?
Though I haven't been over there, I believe it's one step down, so I think it's about thirty inches off the top of it, plus plus her minds.
So currently, both pack, both houses have a have a deck in the same.
Correct.
Uh is there currently a fence there or is that the installed?
The fence is, Joe, see that certain that that fence exists today, and it's going to be maintained.
Okay, and is that a common obligation of the two owners? Okay, thank you.
Um the only question I have is relative to materials and the look of the uh of the proposed additions, that's just gonna fall suit with what's what's there in the existing uh.
Yeah, that that's correct, Mr. Delisle, I weren't intending to match uh everything behind. So it looks like a sort of a continuous project.
Continuous project, yeah.
Am I remembering correctly that the house, like the front yard slows down a little bit? So the house is set at a higher elevation than sidewalk, is that right? I don't have any questions.
Okay, um. Any other um questions from board? I think we've all addressed any questions we have. Um I'm going to close out a portion of the public here on the public hearing and go to deliberations. So um what we're wondering, if there is a ZVA for this, uh especially for the non-comparties. Uh and uh we're more familiar with criteria, it's in our staff report as well, I think I mentioned in previous applications. So we'll jump right into it, um this is a very specific occasion, we'll start with. Um well, there are no new non-comparties on. There is, and thank you, one, a lot, but I think given that there's strong support from all the butters, this is a long way from the street, um I I can support this on occasion, I can see that this is actually more it's worse than maybe what we must hear. More elegant to say that, but that's. Uh I will agree.
This is a rather significant intensification, but I think my concern there is the only rating. Factors first, uh the the addition is uh small. Second, it's single story, it's uh third, the design is uh thoughtful and healing design material for use. Uh so um that in mind, I I get over the notion then. And I guess for the the neighbors to the and to the right, uh the structure there is is somewhat uh distant uh on the property line. And that neighbor has has indicated here she had no objection, so that cuts in favor as well. So uh all those, uh as I said, uh I find that like the sound of the kitchen is uh. To the neighbors. Something to uh efforts to the chair as to how you might resolve this. Unique moves to.
Uh I too to support this project, uh the intensification on the uh downhill side uh do the a little bit of pause, but I think owing the fact that um the addition is so far a setback from the road, and you have the the neighbor, the downhill neighbor and party wall neighbor, that that those those factors will lay my concerns, and uh I don't leave this to be substantially more detrimental to the neighbor.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Delisle, it's, you know, a rear side elevation, it's a wide street. Three, fourteen, but that that house on the street, and again, past the yard, it's a little bit elevated, a little bit slopes down. And I don't think it's substantially more detrimental, I do a little bit, except I'm worried about the deed restriction, but again, I'm sure the chair will figure it out. And I'm having a good time. And it's also, I think, you know, that the size of the lot is is quite large, and it was a small addition, so that that's a good question. A chair that would be necessary to find out the answer to.
Okay, um so I I don't, I I also support the application for reasons I think like my colleagues mentioned, uh I think we just, and and I don't know whether there's any binding uh alignment my original sentiment about um aligning the master deed and condo docs with this. These are two separate micro versions, we are charged with the um you know, the administration of the zone, which flows out from chapter forty-eight. And we are not the chapter one-eighty-three A Massachusetts condominium statute guardians. So we have an opportunity, we still chose um to ask the applicant uh to remind that, it seems like this would be the time. I mean, I don't know, attorney Shane, um let me ask your thoughts on that, and I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say. Uh you know, you you have a star of the line, if you're willing to do it, you can't make me do it, and we can make a request for addition. And with majority of that.
As Chandler, we have no uh concern with the condition because very frankly, uh i- if we're gonna move forward, I want to make sure my clients are in good position, um and we are, we are just looking at the restriction now, it's uh an interesting one. But I I suspect the neighbors next door will will be curious to make sure this is taken care of as well. So we, I can guarantee the board, we will take care of it.
I'm just I'm just taking through the land, you know, entitled to the attorney, and I'm really sure that professional um you know, uh that professional training. So I I want to give this some undefined future, but this is up to you, if you're inclined, you want to do it, um I I guess. You know, I guess that's fine, uh let me ask, because we want this. What what's our sentiment to just simply placing a condition on any motion approved? And then we have done our duty, best we can do it, if we are absolutely inclined, anyone object to that? I see, I see the members shaking heads in the affirmative, no one, anyone wants to speak otherwise? Alright, um thank you, attorney Shane. Um alright, so unless there's any further deliberation, I will close out a portion of the public hearing, and and thank you, attorney Shane. Uh and um I will entertain a moment. Whoever makes it, I'll give you a crack at the uh petition. Or point two-half one street. Created a six number um twenty-two dash point one. With the following works to be added by our chair. Um subject to the applicant's uh benefits of the master deed and any related condominium docs of record so as to remove any restriction within said documents that would be contrary to the board's approval as motion. Yes, okay, moving on. Sure, yeah. Um which is, we'll say, thank you, so sorry, I was sharing my book. That uh that amendment, uh reported amendment, uh to be submitted to the zoning administrative buyer conditions. And um we don't need to see it again beyond them. Alright, um thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Swanford, seconded by Mr. Bennet with the condition as stated, um calling the vote, uh Mr. Swanford. Yes, Mr. Bennet, yeah, Mr. Delisle.
Yes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine, we have heard, the eyes have it, uh the motion carries with the condition. And thank you, Attorney ZVA, and Attorney Shane, the clients, and the neighbors, and you all, the revisions, you know. And uh that uh I believe concludes the last piece of our public hearing business this evening. And with that, I will close the public hearing portion of our meeting, going to our business meeting. We have one matter on the agenda of Google that is uh eight, I'll do eight, twenty, twenty-three, point two. Discretion, toys, minutes, submitted, uh do any numbers with ZVA having changes, comments, revision, or otherwise? Thoughts, feelings, emotions. Alright, motion to approve the minutes I've written, uh was responded, seconded by Mr. Bennet. Uh all those in favor, you can just respond uh with affirmative, uh I or N. All those in favor of motion to approve the minutes? Uh I, any, any? Yes.
I think there's some mistakes.
Oh, okay, well, we can make a change. Um alright, so um before we include both uh scouring of revisions of those changes so that they can be uh correct.
Yeah.
And sorry, this is, we didn't do this, I may have moved a little bit swiftly, but if there's any changes, we're all at liberty to just throw them out there.
Yeah.
You know, we think this uh as we that we need to.
Since the August twenty-third, that's being, right? I think there were, Patricia and I voted in that meeting, so two of those members would have been absent. Um.
I was up.
And so, yeah, you're there, though, it's all, you're a good catch, you're all, yeah.
Alright, um that is a good catch, uh any uh any other changes?
Uh for the first one, um the first hearing for Brother Waldbout Realty. Um Ms. Peckton refused herself, so the motion was approved.
It it's five, five, okay, um. And Gretchen, I see you online, uh I want to make sure you heard those two proposed changes uh by Lynn.
Um I didn't catch the first one so much, but I can, I'm sure I can look at it and figure it out.
Yeah, I think uh what what Lynn had said was she was listed as uh present, and in fact, she was.
Oh.
Nick Bud and and.
Oh, okay.
Patricia.
I'm trying to use your repeat for that.
Right, it's not voting, we were, we were voting, we were not here.
Okay, you got that, Gretchen?
Yes, sorry, I missed that.
And then in the first, you know. And then in the first, you know, because of the recusal.
Yeah, I got that one.
Anything else? Then was there anything else?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. And so with that, Gretchen, by the motion still made and seconded by Mr. Swan and Mr. Bennet. And I'll go through, all those in favor, please respond with I or N. All those in favor of the motion approved. Any opposed? No votes, abstentions, sing? None of the latter, the highest having motion carries and the votes approved. Thank you. Any other updates in chair or my record? I have done, Andy has done. So we are going to, at this point, go into executive session. And pursuant to chapter 38, section 21, we are now in executive session and we suspended broadcast online. Actually, if you do the roll call, both, both, we will be going back. Very good. And for all those, well, actually, there's nobody, there's no one in attendance. I just wanted to say, for the record, we will take a vote on the motion. Well, actually, let me see, we have a motion to go into executive session and a second. I think this response and seconded by the wild motion to go into executive session pursuant after law of chapter 38, section 21. As they're made by this respondent, it's a record seconded by the wild. Colin Lo, Mr. Swan. Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Bennet?
Yes.
Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Rob, should I put the other? Yes, that is. Yes, sorry. And secondly, affirmative, the highest having motion carried. We are now entering the second session. And with that, we can kindly suspend broadcast. And we will lock her back in the local set. And for anyone that might be secretly listening or for the record, if nothing else, we will not be returning. And so with that, we can go off.
Um, okay.
We have with us.